Coming back to put wisdom the money and he was he's asking for us to put about the same thing Mary and he is and he designated for broadband internet to go before he's got him. We by that way we get at least three thousand families start off with it.
This my take on it. We've been talking about this for a while, about three years now. People been talking about it, but we hadn't actually get anything. And I know we have 5.9 million in that CARES Act fund. What are we gonna do with that money?
We got, we get half of it this year and half of it next year. So we don't get it all at one time. But we've already got half of it back a couple of weeks ago, week or so ago. Basically, the guidelines are still being to get kind of laid out. I know some people are looking at, I know broadband is one of the, one of the key factors on there along with some other items too. But I mean, I think that National Association of County County meet tomorrow. And I'm curious to see, like you said, I'm like you, curious to see what some of these other counties are doing too, what some of the other counties throughout the country are doing, not just in South Carolina. But tomorrow, I think we'll find out. And we're supposed to have representatives from the state come down to July and kind of lay out what they, you know, you gotta start somewhere. And then where you get it and kind of build from there. You know, you can't get it all at one time. So hopefully, the state's got a map. It's my understanding, the state's got a map of the whole state. And it shows the areas that broadband is not being locally provided at this point. But over a period of time, I think with the, with the, with the money coming from the state and the feds, and with the money we could use, maybe through some of our CARE, well, I can actually put in a little virus money, but for sake of local justice. But I think there's a possibility we could use some of that pot, you know, that pot of money to match, like you said, to match the grant. We won't pay for the whole amount because we didn't have enough money to pay for the whole amount. But I think it would match that grant to help get it laid out, is my understanding.
That's something, we definitely don't need to drag our feet with it.
No, I think it's, I think it's, I agree with Ms. Manning. I think she's right. I mean, I think that broadband is, is an economic plus at the camp. I mean, I think that people are gonna need to be able to work from home. They're gonna need to be able to access that. Not only, not only to children and the kids need to access it, but I mean, I'm talking about at any level, work related, work related to, and I know exactly how she feels. I tell you, without broadband access and, and high speed too.
Yes.
Because the rest of it don't work unless it's high speed. And so you gotta have it at a certain speed to be able to, to access and to be able to zoom and do the things you need to be able to do. So I think it should be top priority. I hope in July, like Mr. Feeney said, July, I think, I think we'll have a good figure of where we're gonna go.
He said that he didn't have, he couldn't tell what rules it was gonna be on first.
Right.
It was a net war. And they had to develop it. And the people that installing the same with special, living most of it. And they're trying to give my brother, let's give the help and, and, but I ask somebody, it's not gonna be free if we're gonna have to pay for it.
So Clay, we got, we got 2.95 right now. Have we allocated any of that, anything?
No, no, basically, no.
So, so in our, in our list of priorities, this, this needs to be numbered.
Yeah, it's one of the listed on the list, as you, as you see, you and I talked about that too, is that it's definitely on the list. You can use it to, and I like the idea of matching it with state federal money too. I think that, I think it gives you more, more, more customers being taken in through matchups with state federal money.
Well, if you're true upon that, when you did on broadband, that's federal. They the one that, they the one that looks over that, handles that, they have fun that, they asking us to kind of clock in with them and kind of help fund it. Why are you, is that correct?
The only you have to provide, you're right, you go down the same path.
You're the county that can't, you can't go broadband.
You'll have to find, yeah, you'll get, you'll get a provider like, like me and Kenny did with Ori telephone. You'll have to get a provider that's willing to actually be the person that's actually gonna provide the internet service to you. What we do is with our money and the state's money is, they get an actual grant, like, like Ori telephone or San Hills up there, I guess, I'm sure they got a grant too.
But that ain't, that ain't nothing wrong though, with this federal stuff, right?
Right, yeah, it doesn't, we will provide the grant, the broadband service. We'll actually just help fund the grant. They'll actually get the provider the money to actually run the line. So that's, that's the way it works.
We definitely need to do that.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's needed. Now, it's needed, for sure.
Okay. Number seven, is this Lucy or old broadband?
Yes, broadband is same. I'm a neighbor, from my shirt and then, I've been there for 31 years too. One of the first. Drums been big. She's building their house when I moved in. And I don't understand it, consider building. Been there 31 years and everybody I call, want to get internet, they tell me we're not in the area. What area we need to be in? Wick has it, Little Rock has it, City of Dillon has it, Harbor Freight has it. We made two miles from these.
Each place.
Places. And we can't get it. Time one has said, they can't give it to us because we're not here. They'll say, I'll understand that. I mean, my grandpa only come stay with me because I don't have internet. I mean, I was sitting, one of my granddaughter had come stay with me during this pandemic. And she had this little box they gave her. It wouldn't do nothing. She said, Grandma, I can't, it keep kicking me out. It keep kicking me out. I said, well, really, I can't help. Heck, that we can't afford the internet. We just don't have it. I have it. Kind of like internet, none of it works. I have it. You net exceed all of it. You pay a hundred dollars something, you watch one movie, it's gone. I mean, it's not bad. I've been in there 30 minutes, some blush here, and I can't get into it. I don't understand that. Can y'all make me understand that? People don't even wanna move in, move out there where we live because we don't have internet. I pay my taxes. I, I contribute to the city of Dillon and the county. And I'm not, I can't get my internet. We shouldn't have to beg for internet. I mean, it's not bad.
I mean, it just don't make sense.
I mean, we shouldn't have to be up here, up here talking to y'all, stop this. Y'all could take care of it. Make sure we get this done. And I know we gotta pay for it. Once we get there, we gotta pay for it. We know it's not gonna be free. We will have to pay for it once we can get it. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, ma'am. I was gonna say, Ms. Wilson, Councilwoman Clowes been working very diligently.
Yeah, I believe he is.
I'm trying to get that done. I know he's met with a couple of people, he signs some things, he's been very diligent.
He's a good kinda county. He's a great kinda county. That road we pay for where we live at, he got it paid. Right, soon he got, he got paid for it. He's a good one. He knows what I said, the rest, y'all have to help.
They got paid. They got paid.
Sure. Tell him I'm getting this one. I don't think I'm gonna move. That's what I'm telling him to say. They don't want my thing, I can move. Hey, it went to you, stay the night.
Yeah, greetings. I asked for more than three minutes because I was denied three months. But I'll make another request to come back if I forget something. Because I did pick up the wrong notebook. But greetings, council and members of the meeting, the citizens of Dillon County. I stand before you to talk about the budget. And there were some other things that I mentioned to you that I wanted to talk about as well. But first of all, I would just like to say before my three minutes start, I'm having a little bit of anxiety because this room is so small. I've been asking for a year that we change the venue. I think over at the jailhouse, they offer us their facilities. But I'm, I think I'm about to have a panic attack because I, this is just too much. And we're still in the midst of a pandemic. So please, council, consider moving our meetings too. And I say our, because it do belong to the, this is our meeting. So if you all can take that into consideration and get us a place where we can feel safe to talk about important issues that concern us. So I wanted to talk about the budget. About a year ago or so, I came and spoke with Mr. Clay Young. And I do pop in and talk to him, you know, whenever it's on my mind, I pick up phone and call him. And I will say that he has been very gracious and accommodating me and talking with me. I remember my father-in-law serving on the council, Mr. D. Boy Grace. He's gone on, and I, we would have, you know, conversations all the time. And we didn't always agree on issues. But we, we respect our disagreements and we were able to carry on and have healthy conversations. But I'm concerned about this budget simply because in the paper not too long ago, it came out that, you know, at the onset, the beginning of Dillon County existence, the sheriff was the highest paid individual in the county. And so now that we have Mr. Douglas Curnear as our sheriff, we know what the crime rate is like in Dillon County. And when he was elected sheriff, the budget was sliced. That is so unfortunate. If anything, the budget should increase. You know, all of us are concerned about, you know, the crime that's going on in the area. And that should be top priority. And I came immediately and I spoke with Mr. Clay Young about that. And he assured me that the department was gonna have what it need to operate. And it's my understanding that money was put back in the budget, but at the same time, it was cut from the jailhouse. I mean, it makes no sense to me. To me, this is like playing politics. We cannot afford to do that. Because every time we turn around, Dillon is in the news, Dillon is in the news. And it's, it's so unfortunate that we're known as the quarter of shame. You know, we're midway between New York and my end. We have I-95, I-20. We have a railroad coming through here. We have two. And we are quietly progressing. And for the most part, I don't think we're progressing much at all. And we should be ashamed of ourselves. Council, I, I challenge each and every one of you to be transparent, to be open and honest about this budget. Jamal, I commend you, sir. When you stood up here the last time I came and you apologized to the, to the tax payers, because I am a tax payer. You apologized about the budget, that there was no transparency. And we have to have transparency. We have to have transparency. This room is full and it's gonna, it's gonna get larger. So people, people are interested in what is going on. It's no more business as usual in Dillon County. No more business as usual. And one of the things I want to say about this, I have seen people of color. No, I'm not trying to make this about a black or white issue, but this is about a right or a wrong issue. I have seen people of color be forced out of their positions. The positions are closed and then you turn around and open it back up. I wonder what the salaries are now. This is unfortunate. We cannot do that. If, listen, Dillon County is as strong as it's weak as late. We should be concerned about the poorest person in this county. Because when the poorest person in this county, this is about the budget. Forcing people out of their positions, their money, put me back on the budget for some more things. This is the, this is the citizens' be, but we have to be concerned. We have to do what's right, Mr. Buzzzy. We have to do what's right. You know I asked you for additional minutes because I was denied three months in a row to come up here and talk. Now, this is not right to deny me the right to talk about what concerns me. This is tax payer money that I bring into this county. And I have a right to know what is going on with my folks, just like everybody else. And again, I'm gonna challenge you all to do what's right. Last thing I'm gonna say is I know we have money coming from the CARES Act. I want to invite each and every one of you all to come out to the community exalt glade that I'm having on August the 7th, to honor and recognize people in this community that's trying to make Dillon County a safer and more desirable place to live and work and grow. Come on out, council people. Come on out. And let's recognize the efforts. Let's get together and celebrate and recognize. This is the part of the budget. I have a request that you all put some money in the budget. I'm requesting $3,000 that you all support this effort to break, make Dillon County a more desirable place to live. Thank you, Mr. Buzzzy Finkin. And I also want to be on the agenda for next month.
Number nine, the order of reading, second reading, orders to mend the benefits of the George and Dulce and Business Department, paid 22,000 for this other nine. John and the Queen Mary and Dulce County, so to enlarge the Department of Pizza.
Number nine, guys.
Make that motion.
Make a motion, a second. Motion, second, in discussion. Let's see, ready, running in. Nine B, second reading, in order to change the amount of classification from residential three, RS three, to rural REU, tax map number zero seven oh dash oh three dash double oh dash zero three nine, 28.73 acres. Tommy Omer, Tommy Lauter, Angel Dale, Cindy Webber, Webber. The proposed location Dillon, South Carolina, 29536. I think this is something we can put, they can put a sale title on. Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, a second.
A second, it's two.
Make a motion, a second, in discussion. Let's see, ready, running in. It's okay, over here. Landfill, landfill contract, which you guess.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got, Mr. Teddy, who diligently has been working the last couple of years. So I had him kind of come in and help us pitch it through some of the stuff. And I got a couple of proposals. And those Solid Waste Committee or Pod Works Committee met a couple of weeks ago. We looked at some stuff and actually teamed up with, looked at two different proposals. One was repair, one was actually, actually building a new landfill. And I looked at, and I put a map in there which kind of outlines the, you know, the boundaries of the landfill, transfer station we got now. And then we got two proposals. And I'll let you explain that.
Okay, yeah, we got, I guess, two basic ways to go. Either repair what we have out there. The current transfer station, y'all have been up there, you go up and it's got a concrete pad, pad top. It's got, must be about 15 foot by 20 foot hole in the center. It's kind of dropping down where all the water runs through that hole. So we, we can face, we can try and repair that, or either building another one. A new one. Look, old one, I guess you got problems there. Been a little bit outdated. We really don't know how much dirt we'll have to dig out from under the current pads where they dump trash on. We have to get whatever leakage has been in there, have to get that out. But we really got two proposals. We usually, people have, do a landfill engineering with Smith Gardner. And they gave us a proposal both ways to do it. The one to repair, the engineering fee was 44,000, $700, 45,400. And to, and that's handling everything, that's from them designing the repair work, getting the bids, getting permits, and overseeing the jobs. Their bid for designing a new separate facility, which we thought would probably kind of go behind the existing one, bought about 10 acres, about five, six years ago. Their design fee for that was, along with getting the permits and all, is 88,700.
Clay, didn't we discuss this project already? And we decided that we was gonna try to go in there and refine what we had so we can save that money to do other things we need to do in this upcoming budget?
Yeah, that's what the, the Solid Waste Committee met. And I think they looked at, looked at two different proposals.
Was it about 75,000 dollars, I think it was, 70, 80, something like that?
Now, like I said, we, we got, we got repaired. It was about, what, half million, something like that, about half million or so to repair it. And then half million. And then, and you and they were hoping they could build for about a million, is that right?
Yeah, a little over a million, probably. Depending what we go with.
Basically, what you would do is basically, you would, you would use the current station as you got now, you know, in current, and then you would basically build another one right beside, sort of.
What we talked about, we talked about two things.
Yeah, two, either one repair or one, or one build again.
Yeah, and we talked about number one, that we were gonna refurbish that one. Because you were talking about at some point, maybe even contracting that out. And he said, it didn't make sense, the speed would be involved, building a new facility or something, we were contracting.
I know the committee met, and the committee met on both of them, is that right?
Yes.
They, they looked at both of them. I know the committee met, and the committee reached, we gave two, two proposals, two.
Well, they had the Solid Waste Committee making, coming out, giving the deed, putting home, so I took his place.
That's right.
And we met, and y'all brought up something that needed, really upset me. And I didn't realize the consequences. Said a man from Dehec came from London. He'd come down and found this hole, and found all the rest, and it happened several times. And he's come back and they promised him that they would fix it or get a new place. And he's coming back within the next three weeks. And the man that runs the landfill thinks that he might shut it down. If he shuts it down, we can't, you and trash we pick up, we gonna have to haul it to Florence and pay more money for it. The convenience house will be closed. And the town in Dillon, Dillon and Loudoun, what they gonna do with their trash. But this is something we gotta be taking care of. By the way, we gotta patch it, hoping this man to let us get by. If not, they gonna shut us down and everything.
How do we get to the point of being in this position when we about to get shut down?
Should have handled, should have handled it two years ago. Two years ago.
Excellent. So what we need to do right away is figure out what we're gonna do, move with.
Yeah, first thing we gonna do is, we can, we can, I think we can patch it, I hope.
Yeah.
I think, I think we can patch it, you know, to get us over the next step. But you're right. I mean, that, that's.
How long would that take?
It's supposed to be probably from opening Tuesday.
Right.
Or Monday, maybe.
Any guarantees in that? Warranties, anything?
Not really having guarantees.
It's packed.
Is there any kind of guarantee of a man if we get it repaired or let us keep it open until?
Yeah, I think that would satisfy him, as long as we got something. The problem, the big, the structural problem is, I guess, through the years, the rats have kind of gotten underneath it. And the water is actually supposed to drain off the one side. So that the whole floor in the center is dropped. And then we got a hole just rolling.
Concrete.
Yeah, concrete floors. So we really gonna, 15 foot rocks, that, now we put concrete over there.
So how much is this gonna cost? Should we patch it tomorrow?
Probably 15,000. Yeah, yeah, I think that gave us around 15,000. Patch the hole, fix up the hole.
And we feel if we patch it, we, we should be in compliance with that deal. We should be good?
Well, give us some time.
Yeah, they figure out either, either, either gonna build a new one or do a rehab. You know, all that's gonna do is buy you some time to get you to figure out if you want to go with the new one or, or repatch.
So we need a plan, though. We don't have to spend 15,000 dollars to build one. Because we're right back here next to you.
That's why the committee met, that's why the committee met the other day. And, and the two, this podium just right from right here. But that's what they proposed, was that, was to go and look at building a new one. Because they felt like that the old one, the patched old one's about half million dollars, new one's about, about a million dollars.
We got that in the bond, you cover that?
You got to take it out of geo bond. So you'd have to, probably do it in two cycles. Do some out of this year's geo bond and some out of next year's, you know what I mean, to cover.
What, what's happening over the years, big rats have made tons, 20 and 30 feet long, all up under this concrete. They pour rocks in there and then it collapses in another place. We had a president, they don't have to work out that it was working out there. He went down to his first thing and saw one of those rats. He said, rats are being installed back. I'm not coming back. He's come back, I don't blame him.
Yeah, we, we repaired both the side ramps back in 2015, 20, you know, 2014, 15, 16. Now it's just the floor in the middle. It's, it's two ramp, actually, you need to drive up. There's a centerpiece, the trash is put down and then pushed back into a, into a trailer and then hauled off. Then you drive off the back or to another place. But we replaced both the ramps and the sides. We just, we replaced some of the middle, but not, not all of them.
See, that's why, this is why we need department heads in these meetings, talking about it. Because if they were here, they could address concerns.
Department heads did come. We did have department heads at, at the Solid Waste Committee.
His department heads, I ain't seen since I've been.
No, I saw some, they, they usually come.
They have a chance to tell us what's going on.
Like I said, you don't have, you don't have to make a decision. You don't have to make.
You're in for jobs.
That's fine.
So, so basically, we need a motion moving forward for going ahead and patching this up?
No, I could, I could, I could go ahead and get it patched. And we can, we can circle back around with full council about what we can do about building a new one or rehab the curb when we got.
I agree with Jamal that we gotta have a plan. We can patch it, but we gotta move on, know what we're gonna do.
Good question.
Clay, I got a couple of questions about this stuff here. I mean, I ain't on Solid Waste Committee, but I'm a county county.
Right.
Talking about repairing and building a new one.
Yep.
If you repair, what you gonna do with the trash to why it's repaired?
Yeah, that, like you said.
That's number one. Number two is, I've heard somebody say something about getting outside eggs to take over the trash. But you really don't want to do that because then you gonna look the can up for them to be charging our citizens. Boy, they want to charge.
That's right.
Everybody may mad then.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. If you, if you repaired it, you're right. Because you're exactly right. If you tore out the concrete in the middle, by the time you tear it out, set it up, you're talking about 30 days. Concrete takes at least minimum 30 days, good weather, you know what I mean? And it'd take, what, 15, 30 days to tear it out?
Yeah, probably. Well, the biggest thing is having to get all of it.
Yeah.
All of it.
Yeah. That's why I think.
That's why.
I think we need to, I think we need to have, get Solid Waste Committee to come back. Two of the members not here for school meetings today. I think we should delay it tonight and then come back.
The question is repair or replace it. Certainly don't leave so much of my side coming in, charging.
No, no, I agree. I agree. I totally agree with that. I would delay it tonight and then we'll take, we'll take you back up into July at least, kind of that.
Repair, repair. Yeah, it's supposed to be, he gave, no, he said you'd be there tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow.
Or, or not taking trash.
So we'll, we'll, we'll be, repair, think about two days repaired. And after that, we should, two or three days, that was.
Yeah.
So you're gonna say, y'all gonna patch tomorrow?
We'll patch tomorrow. That'll, that'll, that'll buy us some time to figure out what we, if we want to totally rehab it or to, or building a new one.
I think Dehec wants us going forward to have a plan, do, think that rehab it or...
So they may ask you for a plan when they come in the next week. And you talking about next month. We need to be moving fast.
We may have to call a special meeting for that.
We got a meeting tomorrow. Y'all talk about the next, if you're free out tomorrow, put it on the table.
Okay, all right, I will.
You can't play around.
I'll have two members, two of the other Solid Waste Committee.
Waste.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Anybody got any more questions? Number 10, Bay Airport.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got, we advertised a couple of months ago, three, four months ago for our engineering group to come in with the advertising for, to look at the grants we received a year or so ago concerning the airport and see what rehab we got. We got two proposals. We followed the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission's guidelines for advertising proposals, went through, you know, like, went through all the, all that. And so we got, ended up getting two proposals. I think Tony Coller and myself and Ms. Milder looked at it. And we came up with, two firms actually ended up applying, is that right?
Yes, correct.
We'll get a little update of what we're looking at.
Okay, you should have something in there. We had Talbot and Bride and Holt. They submitted, and they didn't submit money. These are just engineers and they'll let us know their cost. It'll be sort of by the hour or by the job, whatever we decide. But the reason that when Tony and Mr. Young and I talked about it, we chose Talbot and Bride. And the reason we did is because Paul Wurfs, who used to work for South Carolina Aeronautics, he was the director and he retired. They hired him at Talbot and Bride. So he knows our airport. He knows what the plan is. We already had the ALP, which is the airport layout plan that the South Carolina Aeronautics did for us. He knows that plan. He's very familiar with everything we're gonna do. And we would like to propose to, now to select Talbot and Bride over Holt.
Yeah. I think they would help us.
What are they supposed to be doing?
Well, if you're, you should have all this. You should be in your package. And this, this is basically what Charles Tabor put together and the USDA grants that we got money for. We got some money from the state council representatives. And the South Carolina Aeronautics is going to, um, put some money in. So I think we had a total of, I don't have those numbers in my head. We're getting 269,300 from USDA. South Carolina Aeronautics is gonna give us 420,636. There's $180,000 from the state. And according to these numbers, we would only have to supplement about $34,000. Now, that's not, these numbers are not right. And I can tell you because the J-8 tank, it was listed at 50,000. It actually is a $450,000 project to put jet fuel down at the airport. But we're not gonna, that will be way down the road.
2023 is on the jet air tank.
Yes.
Right.
2022 is the tank hangar.
Right.
Are we talking about what's gonna happen in 2021?
I think, yeah, I think what they gonna do is, is, is.
Start with the truth.
This, this group here will come in first. And like you said, we'll use some of that $180,000.
Well, I'm gonna tell you now, I'm not gonna vote for something I don't know about.
Right, we, we, the hundred-and-eighty thousand we got from the state, basically, what I was thinking, and we did budget a little bit of money this year for the state, is that we would use some of those monies to see what's, how we could leverage that money to the USDA. Stop at that point, and then let them give us a complete plan, let them, basically let them have, give us a complete layout plan. And say, okay, this is what I think phase one should be, phase two, phase three, phase four. What this firm is gonna do, that's what they're gonna do. They're gonna come on, we'll pay the amount, some amount of this hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars we received from the state to let them come up with a plan to say, okay, this is what we, this is the first thing we need to do to, to improve the airport. And we could use these two grants to, to do that. And phase two is, okay, for a little bit, for these three grants, we need to do this. So all we're doing tonight is picking the firm, basically come back to us in another month or so. It's okay, this is how I think you should go about refurbishing the airport.
Is there a projected amount that it'll cost the county moving forward?
It's, we got, we got a proposal here that was done last year or so ago. Uh, it was one-point-eight million, but that was for abgas, terminal bill, and eight, eight-by-eighty box, T-hanger, what they call T-hanger, uh,
Basically, what we vote for is somebody to come in and do the engineering portion.
Right, to show us how much it's really gonna cost us, if these numbers are correct.
And what we can do, and what we can't do.
And then how much, and then how much money we can leverage the state, the feds, on getting this money, you know what I mean? So that's all, all we're doing tonight is voting on the firm, to basically come in and tell us what we can do, what we can't do.
Okay, I have a question.
Yeah.
Are any of these projects completely, you know, just like you were saying, we have here for yet, the twenty-two, twenty-three? But we also have on here two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, so is anything a big?
No, 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 nothing.
So the money is sitting there?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, have we gotten the USDA money?
Yeah, we got it, we just had to speed it. We got, we got approval for it, we just had, the money is there, we just had, we just had to speed it.
What about, what about your numbers, though? Because she's saying these numbers not accurate.
That's why we want to bring in the firm and say, okay, if, if some of these numbers.
The mayor firm will make accurate numbers.
That's, well.
That's right. We want to make sure, we want to make sure these numbers are correct, what's on the spreadsheet, before we, before we move here, move forward, and I think.
That's why we're trying to find out who's gonna get to put the numbers together.
Right, that's all we're gonna do at nights, is, is figure out how we can put these numbers together, and find out what, how, what's phase one, what's phase two, what's phase three.
I understand, I'm ready.
And Paul Works knows, it's gonna, he's not gonna have to spend as much time as the other companies, because he already knows the airport. He knows where they, you know, would wanna put things, and.
But does that make him a candidate?
Yes.
Yeah, I think he, he and his firm are good. His firm does a lot, not just him, his firm does a lot of airports, but they specialize in airports. They, they do, they do airports really all over the state, really all over.
Ask me, because we, we, we have used the same people for years, and we piss poor results every time.
Yeah, yeah, we, we use, we use three different, we use three different firms in the past.
I called South Carolina Aeronautics and told them they had been on the project. And I said, tell me, are they comparable? He said, both of them will do a great job for you, either one of them.
Yeah, because both of them, technically, both of them, I mean, there's engineering firms that specialize in certain stuff.
In airports.
And these, both these firms specialize in airports. And so they do have the engineers on staff to be able to do it, and Mr. Works just have to be one of the people on the staff, along with a number of other people on the staff in this firm. So it's not just him.
I can use my homework.
Well, I got this long work, so I'm not thinking that being done.
These numbers, were you working on it? These numbers, those were the numbers that were put together, um, by Mr. Taylor, he sent to South Carolina Aeronautics.
What's been the holdup until you?
Well, COVID, COVID had something to do with it.
Yeah.
And then, and then the, uh, 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 money that we got from the state, we got it at different times, so it's been a little bit of lag time there over stuff. I'll wait.
Number twelve, I mean, number eleven.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got, I, I got the treasurer to give me an update, uh, in cash, and, you know, taken out receivables. And we have one-point-eight million as of June twenty-ninth, as of today. And, uh, I got her to give us one update on that, so, uh, um, that's, that's, that's where we're at, June thirtieth. It'll be, we should be okay for the fiscal year, for this fiscal year coming. Um, budget-wise, we're pretty much on line. Joey and I spent today looking at the finance, we're about to, tomorrow, towards the June thirtieth, and we won't get the final budget numbers probably till about second, third of the week in June, July, because the accruals are coming in after July. And we don't get our fed, we don't get our state revenue, total state revenue until probably end of July, middle of August. So we won't know what the final revenue numbers were till about, end of, about the middle of August, just in case it takes the state about thirty to sixty days to, 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 to get, and if you pay sales tax, you don't turn, you don't pay your sales tax until June thirtieth, sales tax, you don't pay that till, till, till July fifteenth, until you get a penalty. And then the state collects the money and reverses it back out, so it may be, it could be the middle of August, the end of August, when we get those final numbers on revenue. But expenditures, we should be pretty much in line. So far, everybody's looked pretty good. A couple of fire departments, a couple of other departments at landfill are over budget, but, I mean, the rest of the departments are, should, are pretty much in line for this fiscal year. In a tight year, you know what I mean? Uh, they need to make a motion. Oh.
No.
Y'all need to go back and make a motion on, about the airport.
Right, right, before we do that, I know, the flyout on council, it was standard that, A, the county attorney was here. B, the financial director was here. Because when we deal with these pertinent positions and money and taxpayer dollars, we can, we need to get answering these questions. I mean, we have questions about finances, but the financial director's never here. The, the county attorney is missed by eight meters. Where these people at? We need advice. So, and, and, and we were talking about finances and budgets and all that. We need to make some changes when people can't come to work.
That's right. Say so.
Financial director, but he's here tomorrow, anyway, but, uh,
Yeah, he gonna be here tomorrow, he shouldn't be here today.
Could you go back and make a motion for the airport, I'm sorry? Y'all go back and make a motion.
Um, Tal, Talbert and Bride is.
No, can we go?
Make a motion, we gotta go. You two, Talbert and Bride to.
The airport.
For the airport.
I make a motion that we use Talbert and Bride to engineer.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, the old ones I got are listed on here, and I listed those ones at, um, A three H, which is, uh, just gonna be softball team, Oak Grove Community Watch, Fire Station Nine, Fire Station Two, the Rescue Squad, Floyd Dell Fire Department, Dillon Colines Club, Dillon Lady Lightning Doyle Softball Team. So, uh, I don't know if anybody, anybody else got another question, if anybody else in council got anything else?
You got a question?
Yeah.
Here's a question.
Yeah.
Fire stations, what's that got to do with recreation?
Ha, oh, Jesus.
Nothing.
They had really, we've always given, they've been able to do it in the past, so they're pretty much into a different airport, which we.
Thank you, Chris. What they asked is, they said, renovation.
All right, can I get a motion from council?
Make a motion to approve the recreation.
Yes, sir.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? Only favor is running. Okay, we're going to take this session, but I'm actually gonna be taking, uh, if I can, try to remind all the buildings, buildings, uh, football field. Have a question, go ahead and take it.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we're going to take the session.